Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees, Banburg School District 1. Today is May 14th, 2020, and you all have had an opportunity to receive and review the agenda. What is the pleasure of the Board with regards to the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chairman, we approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that we approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, and you are in favor of approval of the agenda as it's been presented, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposition? All right, the ayes have it. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes, and because we have so many, let's go one set at a time if you don't mind. And we will begin with the April 20th, 2020, meeting minutes. You've had the opportunity to receive and review those minutes, and what is the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes on April 20th, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, I would like to point out that if you take a look at page 3 of 5, item number F, and if you go down midway through the paragraph, it indicates on March 16th, 2020, the resolution to consolidate was approved and signed to consolidate, and I would actually turn that over to Mrs. Swarting for clarification. There was a resolution that was done, I believe last year, it may have been July of last year, but nothing, no resolution as far as March 16th, that was actually the day that we had the board meeting and the board voted.
I'm sorry, I don't have the, March 16th is the day of the board meeting?
Correct.
And the minutes say what, I'm sorry?
The minutes say on March 16th, 2020, the resolution to consolidate was approved and signed to consolidate. And I'm not sure if maybe you were referring to the resolution that was done last year, or were you referring to the board's vote on March 16th?
Year on March 16th, page 1.
This is on page 3. This is for the minutes of April 20th.
Oh, April 20th, I'm sorry.
April 20th.
And your question is, is the resolution?
Right, if you go, item, item number F, midway through that particular paragraph.
On March 16th, the resolution. That was just the resolution that the two districts drew up to, to look into consolidation. Is that what, I don't know if I understand the question.
Okay, you're saying that when we, you're saying here that on March 16th, 2020, there was a resolution to consolidate, it was approved and signed to consolidate. Are you saying that, that the resolution was approved and signed to consolidate on March 16th of 2020, or are you referring to the resolution that was actually signed last year?
I think y'all did vote on March 16th to consolidate, am I correct?
We did vote, but you have the resolution to consolidate was approved.
By the board, I'm sorry. Should I put "by the board"?
Well, I mean, I can't, I honestly can't put words in your mouth. I'm just trying to clarify, were you just trying to indicate that on March 16th, that the board voted to move forward, or were you trying to?
Yes.
Okay, okay. If we can just have that notated for the record.
Just put "signed by the board"?
Um, there was a vote that was taken on March 16th of 2020.
Right.
The resolution that, I'm trying to understand the res-
So you want resolution out of there?
Well, if there wasn't a resolution to consolidate that was approved and signed to consolidate, there was a resolution, but that resolution was done last year.
Okay. Please let us reword that sentence.
Okay. Well, I don't want it reworded to suit me because these are not my words, these are your words. I'm just trying to understand clarification.
I don't have to talk with you, ma'am, I don't.
Okay, you'll, you'll look into it and clarify it. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, any, is there any further discussion? If not, and you're in agreement to move forward with the minutes, with some clarification to that particular item that was discussed, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? All right, the ayes have it.
So April 20th, page 3, resolve that?
Yes, ma'am. Next is approval of the minutes of April 14th of 2020. You all have that in front of you. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman, if there are no required amendments, I recommend we approve those minutes.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, and you're in agreement with the minutes for April 14th, 2020, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposition? All right, the ayes have it. Next we have the meeting minutes of April 21st, 2020. You've had a chance to receive and review those. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I move that we receive the minutes of April 21st meeting.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that we receive the minutes as they are. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, and you're in agreement, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? All right, the ayes have it. On April 22nd, 2020, you have another set of meeting minutes that are dated April 22nd. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the minutes for April 22nd, 2020.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, is there any discussion? If not, and you're in agreement with the minutes that's been presented, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? All right, the ayes have it. Next is the meeting minutes of April 28th, 2020. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes as presented for April 28th, 2020.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion on the floor and a second, is there any discussion? If not, and you're in agreement with the approval of the minutes, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? All right, the ayes have it. And we are done with item number 3, approval of the minutes, moving on to item number 4, election of the officers for 2020 through 2021. And I'll turn that over to you, Mrs. Swarting.
At this time, it is our annual duty to reelect officers or to elect officers for the school board for the 2020-21 school year. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the office of president for the school board.
For chairman, is what we're nominating?
Chairman, I'm sorry, not president.
Mr. President.
Been watching Twitch TV.
I'll move to nominate Ms. Walker, I'd like to nominate Ms. Walker.
Okay.
All right.
Is there another, any more nominations for the floor? All right, since there is no more nominations, no other nominations, could we have a vote? Please, others in favor of Ms. Walker continuing, this board chair, please signify by raising a hand or saying aye.
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 All right.
It's now alternative.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to election of the officers for the vice chair. Is there a nominee for vice chair?
I'll nominate John Hires.
Okay, we have a nomination on the floor for John Hires. Is there any other nominations? All right, I would like to nominate Diane Banburg. Okay, we, well, we have a motion on the floor to nominate John Hires. Is there a second? Anyone else want to second that? All right, motion dies for lack of second. Moving on, my nomination would be for Diane Banburg. That is my person that I would move into a motion to nominate Diane Banburg for vice chair for the school board. Is there a second? No second? All right, well, that motion dies. Next, we would have the nomination of an officer for secretary. What is the pleasure of the Board? Is there a nomination for office of secretary for the board? Anyone want to nominate anyone? No, I would like to nominate Tony Duncan. Anyone else want to nominate anyone else? No, no other nominations? All right, there are no other nominations. What is the pleasure of the Board with regards to Mr. Duncan being the secretary? If you're all, if you're in favor of that, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Mr. Duncan is the secretary, and as far as the vice chair, we will have to table that.
I don't think we have to.
What would you like to do?
I don't think we have to second that, do we? I think it's just a nomination and a vote.
Well, we have two. We have, we have you on, as the first.
Right.
And there was all in favor of voting for you.
I don't think, I think it's just a nomination and then a vote, isn't it? I don't think there's a second.
Can you clarify this for us, please, mister?
Well, what does your rules require? Just wondering which we have. It could go either way.
Okay.
But you are the arbiter of your own rules as a board. If it was roach rules, ordinarily, you would specify the manner at the beginning to the council, and that wasn't, so I don't know what the rules are. So it's hard for me to answer the question. It could be done either way.
Okay, well, would you all like to revisit that now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And would we revisit, Madam Chairman, I might just revisit beforehand, state the process forward, so that everybody will know what the rules are.
Okay, so we will go ahead and we will revisit the vice chair. With regard to the vice chair, there will be a nomination, and then there will be a vote. Okay? And we will proceed that way.
Okay, I nominate John Hires for vice chair.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Any other nominations? We're ready to vote. All in favor of John Hires being the vice chair, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Then it's going to be, John Hires is the vice chair. Were there any other nominations for that? I don't think so. Ms. Duncan, you okay?
I'm fine.
All right, okay. So we have myself as the chair, we have Mr. John Hires as the vice chair, and we have Mr. Tony Duncan who is the secretary. So we will move on to the agenda item number 5, which is student staff recognition and superintendent's report, and I will turn that over to Mrs. Swarting.
In your package, you have a listing of the school board's training hours that each board member has received. Those are highlighted for you in yellow. This is just a means for you to keep up with, with all of the training that you get through the different occasions that school boards sponsors, oftentimes at the beach, but not since the coronavirus has hit, we've been able to do it that way. A lot of things for a while, I think, will continue to be virtual, and you can tune in and sign in and do the appropriate things and continue to get credit for your training hours. But I don't have any idea, and I don't think anybody at school boards or the State Department or much of anywhere has any idea when this may be lifted. But these are your current hours. If you feel that those are in error, please contact school board and have them to verify those numbers for you. Okay, a lot of questions about graduation, and I have asked Mr. Ulmer if he would come tonight and tell you all what they're doing about graduation. It has been a very, very tough decision. We feel like our seniors have, I don't want to say suffered, but they have not had the opportunity to have the senior year that any of us would have wanted them to have. So this has been very carefully planned, it's not anything that's just fly by the seat of your pants. It has truly been a teamwork, a team effort, and I asked Mr. Ulmer if he would come so that if there were any questions that I was not aware of at the school level, that he could answer them for you. But please note, I think he has already put on your desk some information concerning graduation, and this was sent home with, with, with the kids. So I'm going to turn it over to Danny for a few minutes.
Jack, any advice?
Yeah, we may.
Usually we meet, we have talked about graduation before, just late in the year, just kind of give everybody a heads up of what's going on. Obviously, this year, things have been considerably different. We were concerned at one point that we weren't going to be able to have a graduate, a traditional graduation ceremony, but we, the State Department has kind of relaxed a little bit on that. The State Department has advised for two tickets for each kid. We have a small enough school and a big enough space that we thought that we'd be able to do four for each kid. That's in the football field, in the stadium, regular time. We are going to set up our stage on the track. Students will be six feet apart on the field, and it actually takes up a good bit of space, but those six feet apart per child. So they're going to start on about one end of the, the home side stands, and they're going to go about to the other side of the home side stands. We're going to skip the bottom two rows, we're going to go up to the third row in the bleachers. We're going to give each group of, each kid four tickets. They're going to have a 10-foot box that they'll be able to occupy. It'll be in tape, and it'll be six feet from their box to the next box. And we're going to go every other row, and that gives us enough room for everybody to have four tickets. We have emailed and talked with our faculty members, high school faculty members who are not on the graduation committee or will not be attending graduation. The same goes for middle school and elementary school teachers, they will not be attending graduation. We don't want to give tickets that we could have gave the kids to graduates to somebody else. So we have, we have significantly cut back on tickets this year. You guys will be on the stage with us like we normally are on the bottom, but it's just going to be Ms. Swarting and myself and you. We will not have our traditional teachers from the high school following and sitting down there with us, because like I said, we are trying to limit the number of people. We're going to have security everywhere. The security is going to enforce. Our fans, our parents won't be allowed down on the field afterwards, they will be asked to disperse afterwards. We will be dismissing one section at a time to try to keep people from congregating after graduation ceremony. Like I said, it's, it's less than ideal, but it's more than, than some schools and more than we thought we were going to be able to do initially. Does anybody have any, any questions about graduation, about what's going to happen? Or about what we have tried to make happen?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
The marshals. I don't see anyone here that says anything about the marshals.
They're not going to get, they're not going to get tickets. They will be, we are going to have marshals there. They will do their normal, normal thing as far as helping us get escorted in, but they will not get extra tickets for marshals.
Well, I think this is the highest recognition for some of these students as, you know, the marshals, I think it's the top 10 in the class maybe or something.
Yes.
And I think we should try and accommodate them with at least one ticket. I can understand, maybe not four tickets, that'd be 40, you know, 40 people.
Right.
But I mean, this would be the highest recognition, you know, some of these students get during high school, and I would think we could at least accommodate one ticket per, per marshal, whether we put the, sit down on the chair, you know, somewhere down on the, on the grass on one end or the other, outside the fence, not even in the stands.
Okay.
But somewhere where they can at least be, you know, you know, seats of child, where at least one parent, anyway. Take pictures or what have you.
And I understand that.
Yeah.
That was, that, that went before our committee, and it went around and around.
Yeah.
And I can take it back before the committee, but that's, you know, what I'm giving you is what the committee has decided. Obviously, this is not something one person would want to tackle by herself, there's lots of moving parts in this graduation ceremony to try to make it happen as best we can. And Mr. Hires, I can definitely go back and talk to my, my group about that. We're not going to have a traditional band there, there's no way that can work. All that's going to be over our loudspeakers. We are blessed to have purchased better speakers for our stadium several years ago. We've gone down and done a microphone check, it sounds great, I think everything will be clear. I think we'll be able to have the same kind of graduation that we normally have, provided we don't all melt out on that field.
Count back the transfer diplomas.
Transfer diplomas. You know, we discussed earlier about having some of our parents who work in district to actually give diplomas. We've, we've mixed that, that's not going to be possible, we've already emailed those people so they know. I am not, I'm going to hand a diploma to them, I will not be shaking hands or hugging, which I traditionally do. At least I'm going to try not to, I'll probably grab a couple people before it's said and done, but it won't be because I'm intending to do it. We're going to have our awards day program, it will be virtual, it will be Wednesday night, it will be pre-recorded, pre-recorded. We will have a, myself, thanks for IT department, I'll give a little spiel, and then we'll actually have a run-through of all of our graduates and the awards they will be receiving. And I think Ms. Swarting's going to finish things up. And we have our graduation practice on Thursday, which we will have a practice gradu-, graduation practice on Thursday. At that time, we have bags for each student with their awards in them, so we'll be able to give it to them when we get awards. Speaking of which, tickets. Traditionally, we give tickets as first come, first served. This year, I'm going to tell you, you should probably be asked, our students are going to draw for tickets. I think that's the most fair way to do this, and that is, is that obviously if you A through M and you're sitting on the right side facing the stands, those kids will draw from the first, 40 tickets, whatever it is. When, when we have to practice, you will draw for a ticket, when you get it, we'll give you that ticket with that number on it. So when your family comes, your whole entire family, your four people, will sit in the same box and not spread out all over the place and us have to deal with people being where they're not supposed to be.
Not about the, if you have a family member who's handicapped?
On the, on the bottom, just on the track.
Okay.
We have, we're not going to advertise that.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
We're not going to advertise that.
But we will.
We will. It's also going to be virtual like it has been the last couple of years. I think it's been a great success having it online. We had a ton of people last year stay home and watch it online. Probably the best idea for some of our handicapped population who really don't need the health risk of being around a group, a big group of people. So if you've got any questions, I'm at work, got a cell phone, send me an email, I'll be glad to answer the best I can.
Do we have a orderly departure out of the, of the plane?
We'll have plane security, Mr. Smith's going to be up top, he's going to dismiss us by section.
Okay.
And we're going to dismiss out both sides of the stadium.
Okay.
That's great, and we're only using the home side. So we, we think we have everything accounted for, but you know how that goes, when we get there, I'm sure something will be, won't be as we planned, but hopefully it's not something we have to get used to. Have any questions? No matter, good deal. If you do, just holler at me, I'll be glad to talk.
Thank you. And these are not my words, but they were modest words on the last phone call we had. She said if anybody complains and doesn't like it, tell them to stay home. So I guess that would, would be the answer to, to many questions. I want to give you a little update about the coronavirus. It is still, of course, in our midst. I have tried to keep the board updated regularly with emails after each of the phone conferences we have with the State Department. The next one is either, it's either tomorrow or Wednesday, I'm sorry, I'll have to check and see which date it is. And the last two or three phone calls have been not that informative. In other words, things are pretty much at a standstill. Everything is up in the air. One thing that Molly did say on the last phone call, which I find alarming, is that when we return to school, they are considering having no more than eight to 12 in a class. We can't do that. And on the buses, have one student per seat unless they are siblings and students from one household can sit together. I don't know how this can be accomplished. My only thought is that there is a possibility that we will alternate days present with days online. We, as I've told you before, we do have enough technology equipment for every student to have a device, but the internet is, is a problem for us, and where is Ricky? He is looking into some of those little, what do you call those little?
Wi-Fi devices.
Little mini Wi-Fi devices?
Hotspots, yes, ma'am.
Hotspots. Because we feel like we need to use these summer months, somebody needs to use these summer months, to get prepared and to prepare our teachers to be able to teach through distance learning. I think that that will be quite unusual and quite an innovative thought for some of them, because, you know, it's, it's very different than you're in the room with the kids, you know what they're doing, you know who doesn't seem to understand what, and all this types of things that come up in a typical teaching strategy. But this is what I, I think is a possibility. I don't know it to be a fact, but then neither does anybody else. We're all sort of flying by the seat of our pants. The State Department has done a remarkable job. If you ask questions on the conference calls that the superintendents gather with each week or so, if you ask a question, it's typically answered by memo or something the next day. So they are trying diligently to make sure that the best situation can be made out of a very bad situation. And I think that you would be very proud of your staff. They've all come to the rescue of these children that are home with, you know, we don't know how much support from families, and we've fed them every day, five days a week, and we will probably go to our summer feeding program, which is June the 2nd, was, this would be the last scheduled day of school. So probably after that, we will go to the summer feeding program where they will have a hot meal. The bag lunches, of course, have not been hot meals, but we'll probably go to a hot meal in which case they will pick up from a school site. Again, this is all sort of up in the air. I talked with Mrs. Wiker, the food service director today, and she had had occasion to be with some of her former colleagues from the State Department, and that's about as much as they know. So we, you know, we really are in an awkward situation, we're trying to play it day by day. I don't know. I don't know, um, what the, the fall may bring, but, um, I think we have to be prepared for the worst and hope for the best.
Ms. Ward, how have the teachers, um, adapted to the, um, having to, to do all of this, um, teaching from home, so to speak, with our packets? How are they feeling about that? Were they, were they able to transition fairly easily?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to try to sugarcoat anything. You've got those great teachers out there who are going to get that stuff to those kids regardless, and then you have some who've probably taken this as, as much time off as, as anybody. But I do think that the vast majority of our teachers have done their, their very level best. Now, in fact, I think in the beginning, they probably did too much of their best.
Okay.
And then the State Department sent down, I think I shared it with y'all, what they felt was developmentally appropriate for each of the different grade levels, aged children. Um, and some of the teachers took heed of that.
Okay.
Some have overworked them, but you know, my opinion, for all it's worth, if you overwork them, the quality of the work is going to suffer. If you give them a, a normal adequate amount of work, then you get a better chance to get a good product back.
Okay.
But it's been a live and learn situation, you know? I don't think anybody has intentionally overburdened the kids.
Right.
But I think they feel like the kids have to be schooled six hours a day, and that is not the case as, as we've been doing the distance. It, it, it's not supposed to be a six-hour day. Cause then that six-hour day, they change classes, they go to recess, they go to lunch, they get a chance to move. So it, it's been, it's been different. I, I do think that, um, this district has coped probably about as well as any.
Okay.
And even those districts that had the e-learning opportunities that we did not have, have had problems as well because the e-learning was created for a 10-day span. And of course, all this has exceeded a 10-day span. I'm not saying they haven't found ways to accommodate that, but you know, it, it hadn't been easy for anybody. Even the more affluent districts, I think, have had their own share of different kind of problems.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, you know, I will continue to update the board. I will continue to update, um, the staff, the principals. They've all been great about coming in, and now principals are there about every day. And they may leave at twelve, but they're, they're there, they're running the ship. Um, we can start some early cleaning. We had talked about having a company come in and do a sanitizing of the, all the facilities, but right now the state is looking into doing that at, at the state level. And if they will, then we want them to because it'll come out of the governor's 1.9 billion dollars as opposed to the approximately 500,000 that we're going to be getting, what they call CARES money. So, you know, everything's still sort of whatever, but we're, we're doing the best we can. And as I said, I think you should be very proud of the people in this district. They've, they have really stepped up to the plate and, and gone above and beyond.
That's wonderful. Please let them know, we appreciate that.
I certainly will.
We appreciate the help of the students.
This is, this is a good group of people. Good group of leaders.
We appreciate all they've done to this crisis.
Well, it, it has truly been a crisis. It has truly been a crisis. So anyway, um, if you have any questions about the coronavirus, I feel like I'm almost an expert on not the virus itself, but, uh, you know, the answers that we get and share because everybody from all over the state has different ideas, different thoughts, and, and when you share them all, you know you're not in it by yourself in it. There's, I guess misery loves company.
Bill, do you think that Molly will, I mean, you'll have a lot of leeway as to how you'll bring the kids back? Are, are you thinking?
I think that how the kids come back will probably be a state decision.
Okay.
I don't think that Banburg One is going to decide that we'll have the As, and I mean A, just in terms of a letter, A students on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and the, the B category students, not by grades, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and whatever. I think that whatever's decided to do, it will be done at the state level. I think, uh, the governor is in support of, let's do the same thing for everybody.
Okay.
And have they given us a timeline or when they'll, you know, make these announcements on the protocol for starting school back?
No, they have not. They have not. Um, but there is some concern about whether or not we will see a normal start to the school year, even if we're allowed to start in August. It's, it's a trying time.
How about scores that they mentioned?
Scores, you know, we didn't take any state testing.
That's usually.
Scores. Um, that, all that is decided by the South Carolina High School League. Currently, no competition because nobody's in school.
Right.
Um, and I feel like it's going to put quite a damper on football.
Yeah.
I don't know beyond that score, but, and I'm speaking from just.
Right.
You know, off the top of my head, which is really dangerous. But I think that that tends to be the sport that's going to be iffy. Then hopefully we can ease into basketball and baseball and soccer and wrestling and those types of things. But again, I don't know. You, you think that close contact and all that sweaty body stuff sitting all over everybody? I mean, it's, um, and usually in the weight room, our kids haven't been able to work out.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's, it's really hit everybody quite hard, I think. Our coaches are so bored that they have painted the fieldhouse on the outside. I'm trying to think of some other things they can do, but they, they just, you know, they're, they're coming about, what can we do? What, 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 can we do something about it? Yeah, go paint lines in the driveway or something, you know? But, you know, everybody is ready to get back to normal, very much ready to get back to normal.
Is there any, has there been any discussion from the state level with regards to transporting those students on buses? Cause if we're talking about, and this is, I know there's nothing finalized because I'm sure they're having to figure all of that out if that's the route that they go, but how would they transport, you know, if we're talking eight to, what did you say? Was it eight to twelve maybe?
Eight to twelve in a classroom.
Okay, so.
And on a bus, one per seat unless they're siblings.
So if you're, but if you're dealing with one per seat, that doesn't, that doesn't equate to social distancing?
Well, no, it doesn't. Or maybe it's going to be one.
Okay, stack.
Yeah, stack.
Okay.
But, you know, no matter what, if you really have to do it that way, I see us meeting, you know, taking some to school at the end of the day and picking, I mean, I just don't see how we can do all that. I, I think there's going to have to be another method that I'm sure that is being worked on. Um, but it is, um, it's a mess. It's a, it's an organized mess. Consolidation. And before I forget it, please let me tell you that these signs are for you all to take home and put in your yard for, to let everybody know that you're supporting our graduates for this year. Um, 2020 grads, you are the reason I serve, proud school board and member. So if you would pick one of those up on your way out, um, I, I know you probably would enjoy having that, and I know that any graduate that rides by your house would appreciate seeing it. And I don't know if you've been on the way over the berm.
Yes.
But that, that was done by the high school, was it not Danny?
Yeah.
The, the pictures on the berm?
Yes, no, no, the berm is probably on city.
Oh, the city, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was giving the school a little more credit than they found on that one. The city did that, and I think that's quite, um, you know, a tribute to our kids. Like I said, they have not had a normal senior year in any respect. And, um, and actually, I think most of them are sticking pretty close to home. I think they've taken this very seriously in most cases. Some may be tied down by their parents, but for the most part, I think they understand. Okay, consolidation. Um, this is, we have a consolidation meeting with Denmark two Wednesday.
It was Thursday.
Thursday? Oh, okay. All right. Um, and we, it will be the two boards meeting. We have consolidation became an issue, um, with the last legislative session, not the 1920, but the, um, 1819 session, when they passed a law saying that, uh, small rural districts that had less than 1,500 would have to consolidate. So we have done, and I do have, um, packets for you all. These, um, have to do with consolidation, and I don't know that they are in, uh, in the order of dates or not, and they're not, it's probably not everything that we've gotten, but there is enough that, um, would allow you to, um, look into some of this. We had some early talks. Both districts signed a resolution saying that we would look into consolidation, and that was on July 23rd, I do believe. Um, in that, we also, uh, met, um, as a school board district with our two legislators, Justin Banburg and Brad Hoto. We met with them over in Denmark. I think that, that was an open to the public meeting. Uh, we didn't have very many people to come, but it was open. We had another one in Banburg, probably had a few more people to show up, but again, not a, not a big crowd. So we had, this has been an ongoing, uh, topic, an ongoing procedure for a number of months, going back to last summer, going back to July. Um, we met, we, uh, met first, of course, in Denmark, and then we had a meeting, um, in Mr. Boykin's office in Columbia where we developed the initial plan, what was to be the initial plan that was due August the first. Now, if you look in your packets.
Are you referring to, this is, are you referring to 2019 when you met? And I'm asking because I was not part of that. I may have been listed as your, as part of the consolidation group, but I was not a part of those meetings during that time, so my, my question to you is, are you referring to 2019?
I am. I'm referring to the Banburg School District One and Two Preliminary Plan for Consolidation.
Okay.
Now, I don't think you would disagree, Mr. Boykin, if I said that this was initially drawn up by Kyle Michel, all right, an attorney who works for, for Banburg School District Two with their building program. He took the initiative to take this and put it into words, asking for the money that we felt that we would need in order to consolidate. Um, the last sentence says that subject, the consolidation is subject to fulfillment of the enumerated conditions and funding of the items listed below. Um, there is also a sheet that, that outlines those. We were told by the State Department to ask for the sky, ask for anything. You don't know what you may or may not be able to get. So we did just that and, and in good faith, I think. Um, we knew that there was 12 and a half million dollars out there that could be shared among the eight districts that would be combined to four districts, giving each district about a little over 3 million dollars. So we knew that going in, but we were told to plan for whatever you might need. And, um, if I'm remembering correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think our legislators told us that they could probably get into other pots of money that would help us in some respects. Um, you know, of course, when it's a pot of money out there, everybody wants a piece of pot, everybody wants a piece of pot. So anyway, we submitted our plan, which was asking for approximately 34 point some odd million dollars. And a chunk of this, 15.9 million, was to pay down some of the bonded indebtedness so that we could maintain, um, manageable tax base for our citizens. Bob Dameron, who was our financial, and I'm going to say advisor for lack of a better term right now, came down and spoke with the groups. He told us, we are currently paying for debt retirement in Banburg School District One, 109 meals. We would be finished paying for it in 2028. But Bob came down and to combine the, the debt and bonding, the debt and bonded, I may say that, for both districts, he could still keep it at 109 meals. So the tax base would not hold up for the citizens, but it would have extended the payout for about 30 years. So you wouldn't have felt it today, you wouldn't have felt it tomorrow. It just depended on how long you lived, as whether you will feel it or not. So he could manage all that. Um, when we got our plans back, um, it had been drastically cut as we knew it, as we knew it had to be. First thing off was the 15.9 million for the bonded indebtedness. Um, then we had been told to ask for a district office. That was cut, but, I mean, we were specifically told to ask that. We don't have a facility, the two districts together, to house a Banburg County School District staff. Denmark can house, I think we said about 12, and we can house seven. So if nothing else can be done to bring the administrative group together, it will have to be decided which, um, departments are going to be housed where. So there's a lot of stuff, you know, yet to be decided. Um, on the December meeting, it was decided that, um, we would not go forward with consolidation. And a note was sent to Betsy Carpenter to that effect, that because of the money, and it truly is primarily because of the bonds, we would not move forward at that time. Just in your minutes, there was no vote yet. So from there forward, nothing was really said until sometime in February, March, and it started to kind of come into the surface again. And then at your March meeting, um, I believe it was brought up and it was passed that we would consolidate with Banburg School District Two.
That was after we were told that we were going to be forced to consolidate.
Yeah.
By the State Department, by them holding, possibly holding funds and, you know, holding us over the fire to consolidate.
Well, this is true, but that law has yet to pass.
Right.
The law has not passed. The legislature, as you know, um, left without doing anything for education, not, not just our legislators, but the whole shit and the boogaloo. So it left everybody sort of up in arms. So what was a law, isn't a law, am I right? It's not a law.
But we still have 1.88, the proviso, that's, that's still in effect.
Right.
Okay.
Right, for one year. The proviso is a one-year deal. Um, I guess it expires when, Charles? Mr. Boykin, when does Act 188 expire? Okay, but anyway. So anyway, we, we met the August first deadline, we sent in our plan. It was not an acceptable plan to the State Department, and we are currently working on one that will bring our amount of money down to 3 million and a few dollars. Devon, I think, is taking on that responsibility, and it's just about to make her pull her hair out. But she is working diligently on it. She's trying to get it, get it going. There are a number of things that we can and will do, or that you all can and will do with the 3 million dollars, um, but it certainly leaves some gaps that we're going to have to fill in some other ways. Um, I hope that the state is going to step up to the plate with something, and I think they would have if this economic crash hadn't have occurred in our state. Because currently, teachers were going to get a $3,000 a year raise. No, they are not even at this point in time going to get the step increase that they get from going from 15 years to 16 years, or from a bachelor's to a bachelor's plus 18. eighteen. Everything's frozen on the salary schedule. So, the state is in a position where they don't really know what they can do for us. But I think that it would be to our benefit, again, to plan on the worst-case scenario financially. We, you all passed a resolution, I think it was at the last meeting, that we would operate on last year's budget.
Correct.
So, that is a budget that we will be operating on for the coming year. Now, the legislature is to come back for a day or a short period of time in September, and hopefully, they'll get to education. I think Santee Cooper took up almost all the last time they had. And I know that's important, don't misunderstand me, but, you know, when you're in education, you think that should be the priority, and it affects lots of people. So, hopefully, when they come back in September, they'll make some steps toward at least telling us what's to be expected. I don't think we can make up the short haul in the economic side of the state. We had a surplus in the billions of dollars. It's taken every bit of that just to operate during these incredible times. So, that money, that they were planning to, really, I think, for the first time in a long time, try to do something for education, doesn't exist anymore. It's actually being used to operate the state. And as you know, all educated, all of us are being paid. All of us are being paid as if we were at work. So, that's why, I don't feel bad when teachers get called in. You gotta come in and do this, 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 or this. You gotta be on a hiring committee. You gotta do this, you gotta do that. We follow all the protocol, all the CDC procedures and everything, but when they have to come in to do something that is required of their job, then they have been very, very diligent in carrying that out. So, I don't think there'll be any more money for us for consolidation at this point in time. I think the three-plus million that Devon is working on is probably going to be what we will have to start out with. We will and are utilizing it to the best possible way, trying to be efficient and effective with what we do have. You know, we're just plugging away. There are a lot of issues to be resolved between the two school districts. It's gonna take the two years, probably, to resolve all of those issues. It's not something that can be done overnight. You think you've solved one thing, and then it opens up another, and then it opens up another. It's like a domino effect. You, well, I thought it is, but I didn't think of this. So, you know, it is going to be quite an ordeal, maybe not an ordeal, but quite an undertaking. And I just want you to know that whomever is in my seat will continue to move forward with it. The board will continue to move forward with it, and we will, they will do the very best they can. Can I answer any questions?
Yes. Before you move on, and prior to the vote in March to move forward with the consolidation, can you brief the board on all the information that was gathered from the meeting at Mr. Boykin's office, as well as all the information that was gathered from the meeting with Molly Spearman?
This is all of the information. This Bamberg School District One and Two Preliminary Plan for Consolidation, I think that is pretty much the information that came from the meeting at Mr. Boykin's office. This is where we went through it line by line, and tried to assign a money value to it. So, this was, I mean, I'm not saying there wasn't a conversation among the people in the room, but this was the, this was the product of that meeting. And this is the one where you actually have money figures. You have preconsolidation figures. For example, under A, you have a bonded debt reduction cost. We asked for fifteen point seven million, that's on page three. New district administration building, we asked for eight point five. And these are arbitrary monies. We kind of like an architect while we were sitting there. Facilities improvement, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Technology, have a lot of different technology systems going on across the two districts, so we asked for almost two million in that. Help and safety, which is your cameras and fire alarms, security systems. So, there are a lot of costs that come before consolidation can occur. And then, on page five, you have the act consolidation costs. And those include salary equalization, the salaries are not quite the same in the two districts. Administrative consulting cost, technology cost. For example, now, and Ricky, tell me if I say this wrong, we have, we host our own power school?
Yes, ma'am.
We host our power school, Denmark.
They are hosted.
They are, they are hosted. So, we would have to continue in our server, they would have to continue in their server, but we need a third server to consolidate all of the records of the two. So, there's some costs that a common layperson like me would not realize were there. So, it, you know, it's this, it's gonna be, we were told to plan on losing over a million dollars in Title I and IDEA, but they said, no, that was a mistake. We thought from the beginning it was a mistake. There's no way you can lose funds when you put the two districts together. Nobody, we're not losing kids, we're gonna have the same number of kids. So, that was a little bit of a, I don't wanna say error on their part, but that's what I'm gonna say, an error on their part. But they told us to take that out. Teacher recruitment, and again, I don't wanna say this, but all of our slots are full. We don't spend money for teacher recruitment. We are very blessed, I know that. But there was four hundred thousand dollars in that. And then, you got your moving costs for moving the offices from one place to the other and that kind of thing. So, this was a thought-out plan. I take full responsibility for Ms. Walker not having been there at this meeting, but again, I wasn't, I wasn't told to do that. I don't know. But anyway, that's sort of where we stand now. We will meet on Thursday with both boards. We'll see if we can come to some agreements on some of the things that we'll need, you know, sometimes have to put the horse before the cart. Yeah, horse before the cart. So, we'll need to make some decisions in some areas before we can move on to other areas. So, it's going to be a very in-depth process. Do I think it can be accomplished? Yeah, I do. With patience and with hard work and with, you know, nobody getting the feelings on their shoulders. Everybody's gonna have to totalize and do what's best for a county-wide school district.
I don't think that my question was still answered. Last month, I sent, submitted to you an email requesting that you provide the board with a written outline of the information that was gathered from the meeting that we had this year from Mr. Boykin's office, as well as an outline of the meeting that we had at the State Department with Molly Spearman this year.
Well, now, this is the way I remember the meeting with Molly. You tell me if I'm wrong, you tell me if I'm wrong.
Well, before you do that, I'm asking, did you, I asked for you to provide written, a written outline, were you able to do that?
Well, I think this is the written outline of what happened in Charles's office.
This is from last year. I'm talking about what happened this year. What, where, what outline are you looking at?
The one...
What I don't want the community to think is that in March, we arbitrarily just made a decision that we're going to have a board meeting and we're going to consolidate. There were meetings that led up to this. There was a meeting in Mr. Boykin's office, and there was a meeting at the State Department. And I submitted an email to you last month, and I requested that you provide a written outline of all the information that was gathered from the information that Mr. Boykin was provided from his office, as well as information that was gathered from Molly Spearman's office that led up to where we are with regards to consolidating in March and going forward. And I reminded you of that at last week about the written outline. And so, my question is, this is not a written outline of what I requested and what was discussed as far as all the information that we were gathering from Mr. Boykin and the information that we was gathering from Molly Spearman's meeting?
Well, I talked with Kathy Hazelwood, who was in that meeting with us.
Okay.
Because it's been two and a half months ago. I didn't take notes. She said, well, I remember that you did most of the talking, talking about me.
Right, I remember that, right.
Nobody else opened their mouth. And so, I didn't take notes.
Okay.
I don't know what was said. It was general conversation about consolidation. Charles, you were there, what was it? I mean, it was, it was a very pleasant meeting. It wasn't anything out of the way. But I didn't take notes, I was talking. Six people sitting across from me weren't doing anything. Why they weren't taking notes, I don't know.
Well, let me just say for the record, yes, you're right, that you were doing most of the talking because the questions were coming to both you and, I believe, Dr. Solgerner. There were a lot of questions that were asked about different facets of, you know, different programs that we had going on and things of that nature. So, I just wanted to clarify that when I requested a written outline, this is not it. So, you said that there was discussion at both of those meetings, you didn't do the outline, and I'm just...
I don't have it, you're right.
Okay, that's all I need.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's all we have.
All right. Next, we are down to item number five, which is student, I'm sorry, we completed the item number six, which is the monthly financial report. You have all had an opportunity to receive and review the financial report that was provided. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval or accepting of the financial report that's been provided for the month?
Madam Chairman, I'm moved that we accept the financial report as presented.
All right. We have a motion on the floor that we accept the financial report as it's been presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, and you're in agreement, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? All right, there is not, and the ayes have it. We will move on down to visitors' comments. And Mr. Kim?
Yes, ma'am.
You are up.
I guess it's me. Well, I know it's a big surprise, my comments come about consolidation. You actually alluded to the point, you know, you about what you wanted to talk or say to the public. Obviously, this consolidation, I've probably been here for every step of it. I sat there with Mr. Hano Bamberg, I even talked to him. You know, oh, we want you all to come together, you know, you're all great, you know, I'll figure this out together. Okay, I told him at that time, there's been zero involvement from the citizens at that time. Now, obviously, in December sixteenth, I think that's the meeting where we said, no, taxes are too bad, everybody knows that, I think it's a foregone conclusion. We went ahead and made the motion to, you know, shelve it for that reason, and I get it, I know why, and we thought, from a public standpoint, it was a dead issue. Now, I'm not saying that anybody didn't meet, you know, all along the way that you weren't planning, but the people, the citizens certainly weren't. I'm actually shocked and appalled that we had not had a public hearing where we could ask questions and just go, not five minutes, not two minutes, you know, just you ask questions, you stay on topic, and you keep going till you get your questions answered. So, that part, you know, I'm really surprised, and I'd still like to request a public hearing on the consolidation and invite the citizens of Bamberg to ask every question. Even though it's been voted on, I think people still have a lot of questions. So, when it came to it, you know, a lot of time passed. I mean, January was no, when they put the minutes out. Here we are, March. I mean, I've got your comments here, I'm looking at minutes. You know, Board Chair Walker also noted she had been advised there was an interest in the discussion. However, be assured that tonight will not be the final discussion. I was at this meeting, it was right here. So, you went back in after the end, I think even I did, and I think Bobby Bunch did too. She kind of pleaded to get the public involved, like, we wanna learn a little bit more, we wanna talk about it. And we pleaded our case, and then you went back into executive session. Now, is my understanding, you had consolidation in, for discussion, which I don't believe. If you look at the rules for executive session, consolidation is not allowed. That should have been a public forum discussion. So, I'd be curious to see how we process that. That should have been an open forum, unless it's strictly, what, security personnel matters? Isn't listing your board policies? But consolidation should have not been discussed behind closed doors. So, it makes you wonder. We know who voted for, we know who voted against. I'm not here to bring that up, but I think your comments were essentially were that we've got enough to pass the bill, you know, based on, we had a proposed bill. Well, unfortunately, we voted, and we still have a proposed bill. S four nineteen has gone nowhere for the obvious reasons. COVID nineteen, call it what you want. So, we made a commitment on something that doesn't exist, may not exist, it's just too much uncertainty. So, that part really bothered me. And then...
Mr. Ollie?
Yes, ma'am.
If I can just interrupt a little bit and answer that before we move on to the next point, because I am getting a little older, and you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We had, we had every intent to include the public with regards to, like you said, there's a lot of questions that you have and so on and so forth, and trying to get the legislators here. A lot of that piece was derailed because of the COVID nineteen. A lot of things stopped in a sense of, you know, no meetings, social distancing, wearing masks. That came into play with the ability to actually schedule a meeting with the public so the public could come in and sit down and meet with the legislators, trying to have the legislators come in. At the time that you're talking about, yes, we had every intent to have the legislators come down to make arrangements for them to come here and to make arrangements for us to have a public meeting. That got derailed simply because of the COVID nineteen. That became a big priority at the state level with all of them. I had made contact with Representative Bamberg in an attempt to schedule that, to schedule a meeting, a public meeting, and at that time, it was because of the COVID nineteen. It came out of nowhere in a sense of putting a halt to a lot of movement with regards to a public meeting, so to speak. So, that is not off the table. That, having a public meeting is not off the table, and I believe that this board is willing to move forward with that. Now, it does seem like things have mellowed out a little bit, not totally, but mellowed out a little bit, enough that we can go back to the legislators and say, okay, are we in a position now that we can have a public meeting? Where can we hold one that would, you know, hold the public with social distancing? I'm not really sure how we can do that, but I know it can be done. So, I just wanted to say that the COVID nineteen, and I believe I mentioned in the, in the, one of the previous meetings that we had, it just, it derailed a lot of where we were trying to go with getting the public to be able to speak right directly in front of a legislator with regards to any questions that you had.
Would you agree, or at least in this case, by virtue, your rules say you can call a public hearing whenever you want, there aren't requirements... There aren't requirements like county council has, but a public hearing should always come before vote, always, hands down, because you're going to have all the concerns from the public before you vote on it. You almost, it feels like you betray public trust. Having it after really doesn't matter, because maybe somebody besides me could come in and just throw that silver bullet down, like, no, you didn't think this through, or whatever. Oh, my goodness, they're really upset. There's a lot of people. I don't know. You only find that out in the public hearing, but having it before you voted was absolutely critical. I mean, that's how most government bodies operate. Have a public hearing, check in the block, once you vote on it, you're done. But, you know, a couple of minutes when I come here is kind of hard, but it was a slap in the face, because when you came back out, you voted on it, and it was done, and there was, from the public, we knew nothing. I mean, literally, hey, I mean, I asked in the meeting, even to leave the meeting off, oh, where, I mean, I've got your comments right there that there was enough, that it was going to be discussed, so I was like, wow. So then you made a statement. I don't want to read it, but it talks about the concern. You talked about the difficult decision regarding the children, whether we work with Bamberg too. And I've got your statements here, and also says, we understand the concern with regard to taxes. When the decision was made to upgrade our schools, we were the impression that we were only spending money in Bamberg one. With consolidation, a notion is being called into question. The board will, however, will do everything in its power to spare Bamberg one taxpayers from the additional tax burden. Well, in this case, you don't have that power. That's the legislature. So not having S... Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to say that I was asked to leave the room during that discussion as well.
I mean, I didn't mean it that I...
No, I wasn't present for the discussion about consolidation. I was asked to leave, and as the superintendent, I think I was supposed to be here by law.
You were not asked to leave for that reason. We got to the point of having discussion with regards to the superintendent's search. You were not asked to leave because of that.
Well, then you should have asked me back then when it got over.
Duly noted.
So, I mean, in that big statement, you know, this is what you had to put out for the people, and it says the most important thing, that we maintain the best educational program for our children, and that if you with no child, we'll lose a part of education and call it consolidation. And this consolidation, even Brad Hutter, everybody said it's probably going to lose money, and it's administrative. So by doing this consolidation and making this all about the children, doesn't fly with me. It sounds good, you know, it's all about the kids, you can sell anything with that, but, you know, you just talked about not raising taxes and going from eight years out to 30 years. That's still a tax increase, whether you like it or not. So it's real frustrating when you dig under the hood and you read some of the statements. And so after you put that statement out, I'm wondering, was that, did you write that or was that prepared, Janet?
It was prepared for me.
Before the meeting or after?
With assistance.
Before the meeting or after?
I'm sorry?
Before the meeting or after?
The letter was...
Prepared statement.
The letter was prepared before the meeting with the anticipation, if it passed, it would be read. If it did not, if it did not pass, if it was not, if we were not voted on to move forward, then that statement would have not been read.
So the last thing I got with the power, of course, of FOIA, so you, after all, the statement was made and the statement was ready to go, you know, it kind of seems like you kind of had your mind made up. But I'll take the second paragraph of your letter to Mrs. Bonaparte, the board chair, and you said to her, this is dated March 20th, so that would have been four days after the meeting, although the board's vote was not unanimous, I believe our board is unanimous in its support to provide the best education for our children. Individuals opposing consolidation articulated their concern regarding the uncertainty of the effect of consolidation would have on taxes, and rightfully so, because you also represent the people at times too. We vote aye. However, while the impact on taxes is important, it will not discourage our board from meaningfully participating in decisions that affect our children. The way I read this, as your mind was made up, the heck with taxes. So I'm just throwing all this out there, because we've been sitting in the dark all along, asking to get involved before the vote. And I understand your constraints with COVID-19, but I've never seen any government body not get the public involved before vote, because it's a done deal, I think legally, unless something goes haywire. So it's a sense of frustration, Janet, and...
Okay, duly noted.
That's enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I would want...
Madam Chairman, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
We'll go ahead with the, like I said, the consolidation meeting with the Mark II, but if we can't come to some agreement, I mean, we don't submit it in August, then there's still not possibly a consolidation. Is that correct, Mr. Boykin?
I can't answer whether it's correct. The question of consolidation, unfortunately, will not be made by the school districts. Your involvement in consolidation will be determined by your involvement. But whether the district is consolidated or not, that's an issue that's exclusive of the province of the legislature. What you have is an opportunity to participate.
Right.
If you choose not to participate, they call it sometimes a pocket veto, where the person decides, I'm not, this won't go forward because I won't participate. The board doesn't have the prerogative of a pocket veto of consolidation because this is not within the board's power, you know, in that situation. So if the board decides that it's not going to participate, does that stop consolidation? And as I understand it, I don't see legally where that does stop consolidation. What it stops is the board's impact and the board's involvement in consolidation. If the board decides not to participate, but whether it's, does it stop consolidation? I don't see a legal reason that would stop it.
And I think that was the intent of the board. I mean, even though I didn't vote for it, that was the intent, was that we could at least help carve this consolidation, you know, the planning of it by, you know, participate. Otherwise, like you said, it would be dictated to us.
If that, I'm saying it can be dictated to you. Your decision not to participate, the only impact it will have is that you will have no input, you know, to say flatly that if you don't participate, it doesn't go forward. I see no legal reason that would support that proposition.
But the August 1st deadline is off the table. It doesn't exist anymore.
It doesn't.
So, you know, it doesn't matter how fast you go or how slow you go, it's off the table, according to Mexico and the State Department.
Okay. Although there are no other visitor comments that are signed in, I did receive an email from Sarah Sandifer shortly before our meeting, and I will read it to the board, and I do have copies for the board as well as for Mrs. Stokes. Her email says, "Mrs. Walker, thank you for your responses in regards to my article about the school board in the Advertiser Herald. You are correct that Mrs. Sworting had answered the questions I brought up about the extra school supplies, as well as answering my questions about the procedures of the schools closing. However, the other question I had were not answered. I have been trying to find out if there is a policy in writing as to what timeframe is an acceptable, timely manner for the school board to respond to anyone's questions. However, two months is definitely not acceptable. I'm sure you would agree." The next paragraph reads, "I hope you will help me understand better as to why you won't speak for Mrs. Sworting's position when she had an impeccable review of her performance, or why the board felt it necessary to hire a company for $7,500 to search for an interim when you could have easily saved the district that money and agreed to keep Mrs. Sworting on. My question about why the board felt the need to hire this company after stating that the board is keeping best interest of the taxpayers, after the taxpayers have stated over and over that they prefer to keep Mrs. Sworting on, has not been answered. Nor was the question of why did the board think it was a smart move to pay this much to hire a company after trying to give yourselves a $600 a month raise but are claiming to be economical? And that's the question. I hope you understand that this does not look right to anyone and is completely disheartening, and that is what we taxpayers, parents, are trying to get the board to explain to us. Thank you for your time, Sarah Sandifer." And I will give some thought to this, and you will receive a response in an appropriate time. Next on the agenda is executive session to go and discuss personnel recommendations for hires, personnel recommendations for resignations, student transfer requests, and other personnel matter. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to going into executive session?
Madam Chairman, I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel recommendations for hires, personnel recommendations for resignations, student transfer requests, and other personnel matter.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, you're in agreement that we move into executive session, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? All right, there is not, and the ayes have it. We will now go into executive session. All right, there is not, and ayes have it. We will now go into executive session.
All right, board, I will entertain a motion that we come out of executive session.
Madam Chairman, we will come out of executive session where we discuss personnel recommendations for hires, personnel recommendations for resignations, student transfer requests, and other personnel matters.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that we come out of executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, in agreement that we come out of executive session, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? All right, the ayes have it. We are now out of executive session and we will move on to item number nine, which is action on executive session items if needed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I make the recommendation that we accept the personnel recommendations for hiring for personnel one, two, three, and four. And also, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the hiring of Ms. Dottie Brown as interim superintendent for Banbrook School District One commencing on July 1st, 2020, and further move that we authorize you to execute the employment agreement discussed in the executive session tonight.
All right, board members, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, in you an agreement, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, the ayes have it. There was no opposition. Next is personnel recommendations for resignations. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the personal recommendation of nonrenewal for personnel six. I also make recommendation for resignations for personnel one, two, and three.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Aye.
Motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, in agreement, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. The ayes have it. Next is student transfer request. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation that we accept the student transfer request for student one, two, three, four, and five.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, if there is none, and you're in agreement, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? If not, the ayes have it. And with regards to item number D, other personnel matter, there's no action being taken on that. Next, we have item number 10. And that is a motion to adjourn. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Before we have a second. Can I ask you to resend that motion? I would like to restate it, please. Okay, we have a motion that she rescinds that. Is there a second?
Aye.
We have motion on the floor and a second to resend that motion. Nope, is there any discussion on that? And if not, you're in favor of that, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, the ayes have it. Before we move into adjourn the meeting, I would like to make a public announcement. And that is, tonight, after a comprehensive search, the Banbury One Board of Trustees is pleased to announce our new interim superintendent. After conducting a national search and interviewing several well-qualified candidates, we found our own Miss Dottie Brown to be the best person for our district at this time. Mrs. Brown's reputation as a professional educator was obvious during her interviews and substantiated by her professional references. Mrs. Brown has exhibited a willingness to follow established rules, but when necessary, will ask the tough questions to ensure that the best interest of children is served. These are characteristics that we believe are an asset and should assist our district. We realize that consolidation is in our immediate future, and Miss Brown will serve and assist the district through this transition. Our immediate goal is to have our district and our children ready to fully participate in the consolidated district. It is our belief that Mrs. Brown will help us accomplish this goal on behalf of our children. Please join us in welcoming Miss Brown as our interim superintendent, and let's work with her for the good of all children. Thank you. All right, now we are down to item number 10 and a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chairman, may I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I just want to thank this board, you know, for all her years, you know, not only as a teacher, but an administrator. You know, the dedication to the community and the students of Banbury County. And like I said, we just want to thank you for everything that you've done for this district.
A pleasure to pass through the floor. Thank you so much for that, John. Now we are down to item number 10 for the third time. I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move that the meeting adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, you're in favor that we adjourn, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Nope, the ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned.